Okay. It will be in two o'clock on October 7th, 2024. I'll call the Board of Selectmen meeting to honor. This meeting is being recorded by Area 58 Media for broadcasting. However, the official minutes of the official record of the meeting is the minutes that are approved by the Board of Selectmen. So, the first agenda item we have is the Code of Conduct, next steps for implementation. Do you want to give us a little update? Have we heard anybody since?
Sure. So, we had one minor modification suggested, which we're proposing to remove from it, simplifying it a bit. And beyond that, I think when it comes to implementation, the most efficient way would be to work with the town clerk's office. She has an electronic database where people can essentially click to indicate that they're in receipt of it. I think that that's probably sufficient for board and committee members acknowledging receipt of it, but I think for the employees in which it pertains to, we should do a formal signature process, similar to what we've done for the town's harassment policy, social media policy, that sort of thing. So, I would propose that we move forward in that manner.
Okay. So, you had made a motion. The only concern I had was with volunteers. We don't want to put up any roadblocks that would say, "People don't want to get on the board because of this," or "People who are on the boards decide they want to get on." And I don't know if that's a viable, you know, concern or not. So, I was assuming it would apply to, at least initially, staff, anybody that is staff, paid staff in the...
Right. And we would have all the board and committee members sign and receipt.
Okay, yeah. So, this motion still stands and you...
That suggested language still stands, yes.
Okay. Any...
I think we're good. I think we've handled it beforehand.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the code of conduct as edited and commence implementation via the town clerk's office.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Departmental update from fire chief, Dadi.
Thank you for having me come in today. I appreciate this opportunity. I think things are going really well. I think things have moved in a really good direction. Been here for a year now in this position. Just recently, so effective in July, John Gonzalez was promoted from lieutenant to captain. He's a great asset to our department. He's been heading up a lot of, keeping track of a lot of our maintenance, preventative maintenance on the vehicles as well as equipment, as well as assisting Captain Norton with training. Additionally, right now, I'm in the interview process for lieutenants, probably looking at hiring three lieutenants to match up with the captains for this year. That process should be completed by the end of the month, and I will come before the board with the suggested lieutenants and introduce them to you. And if it's okay with you, I'd like to do a small swearing in for those three and then Captain Gonzalez as well. Other than that, recently was able to install four mobile radios into the frontline apparatus. Those radios were provided to us by a grant from the state, part of the SAFE grant. So, that was last year's SAFE grant. We're in the process of applying for this year. And we're still waiting to hear back from the assistance of firefighter grant, which is through, which is a national grant. We put in for that for portable radios because ours are outdated and frankly getting to the point where they're almost unsafe. They're not intrinsically safe, which means that they're not protected if we're in an explosive environment. They don't meet the NFPA requirements, and many of them are not digital capable, which the police department has moved to all digital capable radios. So, many of our portables cannot communicate directly with the police if we needed to on their frequency. They would have to switch to ours. So, that grant was written for $181,000. We're still waiting to hear. Hopefully, we should know either way on that soon. And then, if we get the radios, my next biggest priority is replacing some of our hose. Most of our hoses well over 10 years old and reaching kind of that end of life phase. So, we would like to start replacing that before it becomes a danger, but gonna go with grants first and then if not, we'll figure out a process to implement it in stages. And I think that's mostly what we have going on. I think runs are up. Our call volume is increasing. Our mutual aid is increasing. Our second calls are increasing where we're already out and then second calls are coming in. And we expect that trend to continue, particularly as the additional units go into Halifax and Carver as their population continues to expand. That's going to affect our run volume, but I think we're handling it well. And I think things are going well.
Do you get paid for that?
Yes, yes. The ambulance runs, we get paid for, yes. We collect there our revenue from the ambulance, same as we would any call in town.
So, I had your honor appearing, you speaking in the library, Sandy. Could you give just a short synopsis on the lithium batteries? Because that was a real surprise to me.
Yes. So, lithium ion battery fires are increasing nationally. They're one of the hot button topics going on throughout the country. Lithium ion burns at over 3,000 degrees, which is twice the temperature that our turnout gear is rated for. And there's really no way to extinguish them. So, for us, it's containment and keeping other batteries cool. We talked at the library, some ways to kind of keep yourself safe would be to make sure that you have batteries and chargers that are compatible with the device. So, if you go to Home Depot and you purchase a power tool, make sure that the battery is made for that power tool. Purchasing things on Amazon isn't usually the best practice because a lot of them aren't necessarily safe. And if you are buying one on Amazon, make sure it has the UL certification on it to ensure its safety. When you buy a new cell phone charger, make sure that the cell phone charger wattage matches up with what the cell phone's supposed to be charged at. If when you are charging any electronic device, the battery's getting really, really warm, you need to make sure that the charger's compatible and make sure that that battery's not reaching the end of life. Obviously, if a battery is starting to get deformed, you should call the fire department. We can come and check it out. But that's usually a sign that it's ready for that battery to be recycled. Same thing if there's any odor coming from the battery. That's a significant red flag. You should call the fire department. It's not recommended that you charge those devices overnight inside your home. So, e-bikes, scooters, hoverboards, those things shouldn't be charged for long periods of time, especially where they can't be monitored. And especially if there's been any compromise to the battery, if they're left out, if those devices get left outside for long periods of time, if they're in the sun for long periods of time, anything that can cause damage to those batteries could potentially cause a catastrophic failure. In the industry, it's called thermal runaway, which is when that battery catches on fire. And the only thing that you can do is try to keep it from spreading to the other units.
You mentioned that, were you looking for a grant to replace like the gloves and things?
Yes, that's one of the things on the list that we're looking to replace, hopefully either with a new SAFE grant, or I might even have the money in my budget right now to do it for additional gloves, as well as some containment solutions to put those batteries in a bucket that gets sealed and then that bucket can get recycled. And that would be if a battery had already gone into failure. They recommend that it not be touched for about 30 days prior to it being shipped. And then there's specialized containers that you can ship it in, as well as blankets for car fires to keep it, to keep it contained to just that one area to protect exposures. It's also recommended that when they're being transported on a flatbed, any hybrid or electric car should be covered on the flatbed.
I'd like to see you go forward and get those because I wasn't aware that we had that potential risk.
Yeah. It's pretty much lithium ion batteries become kind of the industry standard because they don't get memory like the older batteries would. You can charge them for however long you charge them for, and they don't have to be completely drained or fully charged to not develop that memory. And they tend to last longer, but they do have the downside of the additional potential danger.
You know, Carver was looking at, there's some businesses, I guess, wanting to put in a solar warehouse, battery warehouse for the solar.
Yeah.
That's a little risk for us.
It is. And then there's also, I mean, the state has finally started to adopt codes for people that are putting battery management systems in their homes, as well as, you know, the additional chargers and stuff. They're all starting to, the codes are finally starting to catch up to the technology.
Seems like every advance has a downside.
Yes.
Sure. So, running back to operations, the budget year-to-date, how are we doing on that?
I think we're right where we need to be so far. We have had a couple of unexpected maintenance expenditures, but so far, we've been able to handle that appropriately. And as long as, knock on wood, nothing else drastic happens, we should be able to keep things going. Yeah, exactly. Keep things going, status quo. So, I think we're in okay shape.
Thanks.
Yes.
The only thing I would ask is just how common is it for the regular little batteries? Normally, most people hear about the fires with the cars and so on. Just, I know it's a hard question to ask, but do you know any kind of statistics on what would be for some of those like battery chargers, like a screwdriver or something like that?
I don't have the direct statistics. I could probably look it up. They're seeing it more, like the national trend is more towards the e-bikes and the hoverboards and the scooters and things like that because of fraudulent, you tend to see more fraudulent batteries than those because it's so expensive to replace the batteries. And then same thing with the chargers. It's more expensive to get a good charger for them. So, we see it more there. I could try to get the statistics and bring it to the next meeting.
Just curious. I mean, and after you guys had a meeting at the library, I know Captain Chostrad is very good about following up on social media and so forth.
Yes.
You had something without, tell people a little about that because I think most people's perception would probably be along the lines of vehicles and not picking up some of the things, the charges, whether it be cell phone charges. Just a little thing.
Yeah. And the biggest, usually they're very stable. It's when they face some kind of trauma, you know. Anytime you're on YouTube, there's usually, more recently, there was a cell phone video of a person in a gym, and he dropped the weight on the cell phone. And then you can just see the cell phone start to go into that thermal runaway because the battery was punctured. So, it's a lot of times if you, you know, you're working outside and you drop the tool off the ladder, that you definitely, you don't want to bring that battery back into your house. Leave it, leave it someplace away, safe. Watch it for a few days, make sure it doesn't get disfigured, start to smell, and next time you charge it, keep an eye on it.
Excellent. Very good information.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you. Thank you.
Funny enough, next thing is up one road, solar, walking path.
So, we've put this on there. Just wanted to get like a quick updated status on that. So, our attorney is still communicating with the solar people, and they were also communicating with, I believe it was Wildlands Trust. Is that correct?
Yep.
As far as like the conservation restriction and how that might be able to enable a walking path, I just wanted to make sure that we were clear. So, is Mark taking that over? Because that had been one of Christine's projects. Okay. Then I'm going to follow up with our attorney, with John Eichman, and just get a status update on that. I just didn't want the project to fall off the radar entirely.
No, it could be a really, really good one for, you know, since it's place to park and it's level.
Right.
That would be great for seniors.
Yeah, that's a great project. Even the whole solar project, the solar panels kind of tucked away, far from bothering anyone, and the opportunity to put a lot of the land under protection, that land contiguous with town old land behind the Bennett School. The problem to some degree is the CRs, the conservation restrictions, take forever to get done. Even when we get them done, attorney to attorney at the state level, thankfully, we have Jonathan Eichman working on it, who's dot the i's, cross the t's kind of guy. And with any luck, this can be straightforward, pretty easy, and another nice asset for town folks.
Would be. Any comments? So, I'll make a motion to authorize Mark Russo and the town administrator to communicate with town council and the solar company to facilitate establishment of a draft agreement for the board's review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Old townhouse, general use and regulations. I brought this up originally, and I appreciated the samples you got. I thought the Dayton one was especially good in terms of rules. I do think we have to do, or at least I have to do a little more homework on, probably in terms of reaching out to the board of health. So, we got a little pushback just talking about a meeting for the board of health in terms of the existing septic system and the well. And I think we just need to figure out what we can do and then, because I don't want to put rules and regulations and then we can't offer it to somebody. You know, the idea was that residents would be able to use this. So, if somebody was having a wedding, which somebody approached us on, we'd be able to say yes, and here's the rules and regulations, you know, what you have to have for insurance and what you have to have in terms of having, making sure the cleaning's done and maybe a deposit that you get back after somebody goes in and looks at it. So, unless there's something we want to do today, I would like to go off and just look into this a little more.
I'm really glad to take that course because I think, I mean, this is an issue that's been sitting that we just haven't really gotten to, but I think it's a really thorny issue on a lot of levels. There is absolutely the board of health. There is equally the question of who amongst town staff would administer this. You know, there's stuff beforehand, there's stuff during an actual event, there's stuff afterward, and it's, and some of these might be weekends, and it's really unclear who would take care of it. I think that's one thing. We're certainly going to need a document looking into what's excluded. I serve on the nonprofit, on the board of a nonprofit organization that confronts constantly organizations that want to use their public facility for a presentation, who get kind of deep into political issues that then kind of come and tar the organization. So, we get into the issue of what we're going to exclude, who's going to exclude it. I think we get into fee issues and what we want to charge for this. And lastly, the liability, I mean, even with page after page of documentation is always tricky. So, it would be lovely to use that building more, but I think we got a fair amount of work and ultimately probably need to end up with a document that we work off of to chew on and then approve.
We also have a little twist, too, in that the Plymouth Historical Society has a lease. And in the lease, it says that if they have, if somebody comes to them, let's say like the exercise group, and they sponsor it, and the exercise group pays the historical society, the money's used by them. And the question of how rules apply to them, we got to make sure that it's, you know, consistent across whether it's the historical society or the town government.
And I think that's, of course, is the last piece, and we worked together on that. It was a challenge five or six years ago, and I think we really have to look at six, five or six years down the road. We probably have to reevaluate that whole setup.
Yes, I agree. My main point was from before also about the parking that's there because there's really not adequate parking. So, if you have enough people who are going to be showing up for these events, it's where we're going to put them. And if we're putting on private property, la la, Mr. Doyle's land on the side, it puts him at risk as well. So, I'm concerned about the parking because it's not, that building's not set up and conducive, and it's at a T intersection as well. It's not overly well-lit. So, I would be concerned about that and having it plowed, salted, everything else. And obviously, some of the upgrades that have to be done to the building to make it feasible to go in and so forth as well. So, there's definitely some things that need to be discussed with it.
Yeah. So, we'll take this as to-do. I'll see if I can help shepherd some of this and hook you guys for some answers. Okay.
I have, on that lease that you had, that you have...
Yeah.
That, when the historical society kind of went, and people left and changed, I think that needs to get resigned.
Okay.
Yeah, PHS disbanded and then reorganized after a while. So, I think most would argue that that lease isn't even...
No, I don't know about that. I mean, they didn't disband. They just didn't meet because of COVID. But the board was still there because we had a...
I thought they pulled back from the country and...
They pulled back. The president left the country. But the board, we actually had the new board had a vote and had the old board sign out, bringing it over to the new board. So, I think we can say the continuity is there, even though they weren't meeting during the COVID span.
Because they had retaken over all of their bills, all, everything.
So, right. The only thing they were paying for, the historical society in the lease, was the Wi-Fi. Everything else we had agreed would move over to the town.
They were paying the heat, too.
Yeah, we agreed.
No, this was like, they were...
They were actively paying everything, and then they turned everything...
Pay were actively paying like a lot. The only thing that was...
I know. That's what I'm saying. There was an agreement that...
So, you need a lease that would reflect the current arrangement, just so that the roles and responsibilities and everything.
Yeah.
Because we had found the heat had never been transferred over to us, and I couldn't do it. And then we found out, we hired someone to go there to find out what was wrong with the heat.
And it was the gas, yeah.
And it was the gas that had been shut off because they never paid the bill. I redid the bill, had it done twice now, and I don't, that bill is still up there. But it was never coming. It was under the historical society.
I've seen nothing in the, I have most of the documents they turned over to me.
I had Jen, it was Jen and Mike that kind of took over once the other person had bought.
Sure.
So, and they were like, oh, no, it's on you. But we paid someone to go there to tell me that there was a law.
All right. It's a town building, so.
Okay.
John?
Yes, I did.
Do we know if they're paying fees to the town or are they collecting fees themselves?
Right now, there's no fees coming into the historical society, no. It's being done through the Council on Aging. So, the, actually, the Council on Aging, I think, is probably paying for the fitness class. They give them a stipend. I believe the yoga, something like that, too, so.
But the society doesn't collect any fees currently at this point?
No, just the membership fees, and they haven't been collected in a while. We're going to have a meeting sometime in November and have a general membership meeting. See if we can get back going.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. I'll move on then to approval, no, procedure for projects at town grounds and buildings.
So, this was one of the items that I had requested, and I sent around a draft form that I'd like the board to consider adopting. In my mind, this would be most efficient if it were for projects over $5,000. But I think it would help with delineating roles and responsibilities, both with respect to projects in terms of people being properly notified when work is occurring on or in town property, but also in terms of other aspects of it, like following proper procurement procedures and making sure that the town accountant is able to maintain a proper record of any sort of projects that are going on, also projects that may require a building permit or permits from the other inspection services entities. So, I'm proposing this sign-off form, the way I envision it, we could see how it works out. And it would also provide on there that if it were a project, let's say that we were putting forth here, but we needed to let the town properties committee know, we could make notification to them as well. But I just think that with all of our part-time volunteer-based boards and committees doing a lot of great work, I don't want to get lost in that, the fact that there are still procedures and laws to be followed. And I think that this would set everybody up for more success.
One question. I understand why this is mainly for projects greater than $5,000, but might we write that in under the procurement method required? Because even smaller projects, we'd want to form just to know who's doing, just so that we know what's going on.
Correct.
So, that might be the one piece I'd add on the procurement method.
Sure.
Okay. I agree with Mark on that. Yeah, I think this is well-needed. So, I'll make a motion to establish the policy of completion of the projects on town grounds or in town buildings formed for projects over $5,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, will this get amended then? Do you have to vote to amend what Mark had suggested?
I'll just do it on the form, and then I'm going to send it to everybody.
Okay.
Approval of designer contract, attic insulation for the townhouse.
So, this is part of the townhouse roof project on the older part of the building. We still need to finish the work, but we need a vendor who's licensed to do that particular style of insulation. Our designer is proposing a new small contract with them so that they can modify the specifications. They can obtain quotes for that work, and we can get it done hopefully before winter. That project has gone on for quite some time, and we did have our fair share of issues with it. So, we feel like this is the best path forward to getting the work done on time and within budget.
And I know Town Properties was speaking to you, and they're in full agreement.
Yes, they're involved, yes.
Any questions or comments? I'll make a motion to approve the design service contract with Habib and Associates for $8,950 for the attic insulation project and authorize the town administrator to sign said contract.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. The next one is approval of a designer contract for the front door. This is a blend of townhouse CPC project money. You want to take that one, Liz?
Sure. So, this, this project is being funded by the community preservation committee, and it's to restore the historic entrance at the old front of the townhouse. And Town Properties Committee is working with Habib and Associates. They provided them with the initial design and the cost estimate so that they were able to go forward to the community preservation committee. So, we're looking to get that contract signed up with them so that they can refine the specs, get quotes, and get going with the work to utilize the CPC funds that have already been allocated for it.
You okay, Mark?
I'm okay.
Yeah, good. Any comments? I know we've discussed this at the Town Properties Committee a number of times, and I know they're, again, in accordance with you. So, I'll make a motion to approve the design services contract with Habib and Associates for $9,500 for the front entrance CPC project and authorize the town administrator to sign said contract.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bree, do you have warrants paid? Any large items in that or...
No, nothing too fancy.
I've been working on ARPA reporting with Plymouth County, and we also have been working on some internal ARPA reporting for the local funds that we already have. So, we're still waiting on a few things from Silver Lake. We do have the contracts needed. We do have the contracts needed for the HVAC work, that they're going to be coordinating with our portion of county ARPA money. But we're still waiting on them to answer some final questions from the county. And then hopefully, we'll be receiving those funds, and then we can figure out the most efficient means of getting our portion over to Silver Lake so that they can get that work done. We also are working on getting the numbers a bit more refined for the well project for the town campus. One of the estimates that we received in, it also included some paving work that likely wouldn't take place until after potentially a new fire station was constructed. So if you deduct that out and then look at what we still have remaining in county ARPA to put towards that project, I think that we're going to have to come up with about $100,000 plus or minus to see that project through to completion, which could likely come from capital. Or we did get authorization at the last town meeting to borrow towards the design and planning for the new fire station. So it could also fall under there. I think that was the original intent, the way that that article was written for town meeting. Because obviously, you can't build a fire station if you don't have a well and a water source. So we should be fine there, but I think it's just something for us to keep in mind as the discussion progresses with the financial team and the budget outlook for next year, as far as where those funds are coming from. That said, our financial team, we have a meeting coming up in about a week and a half to start going through some of this stuff. Our assessor's office is doing great as far as their work needed to get the tax rate set, hopefully much earlier than in years past, which will be helpful for our treasurer collector's office. And we're also working on some of the reporting with DOR. But everything seems to be going very smoothly with that. And also, our auditor is going to commence last fiscal year's audit. He's in the process of getting started on that.
As an aside, I've asked Liz if she would reach out to our auditor and have him come sometime before the end of the year and give us an update on the management practices. They issue a report every year. And you can, you know, just have him go through and highlight the main things in there. Any correspondence, Liz?
Yes, so we have something in from the town clerk that she needs approved. And this is the warrant for the state election for Tuesday, November 5th. And it has the slate of officers, the different offices, and it also has all of the ballot questions. So we'd be looking for a vote on this to have you approve it so that she can have the constable post it. I would recommend, just where this came in in correspondence, that at our next meeting, we put it on under regular business and just take a vote to ratify it.
Okay.
Because this one prepped up on us.
Okay, so do we have to do anything today?
I would take the vote today so that she's not delayed in getting this posted. So I would recommend that you make a motion to approve the warrant for the state election as provided by the town clerk.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we, say again.
Approve the warrant for the state election as provided by the town clerk, and that's for Tuesday, November 5th, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's it, Liz?
That's all I have. I'm going to pass this down for signature, and then it can go to Bree.
Do we have some minutes, Bree, that we need approved?
Do we have dates to remember? Or do they come after minutes?
After minutes.
Sorry.
Dates to remember, okay.
I sent you the minutes.
So which ones, just the?
Not 23.
Not 26? Okay. I didn't read the minutes, I didn't have any issues with it.
I'm good.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of September 23rd, 2024, as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's see, dates to remember, we have our October 21st Board of Selectmen meeting, followed by November 4th.
And I, I might use that, sorry, to jump ahead before the Community Preservation Committee. Deadline for applications in the fall is October 15th, which is a week from tomorrow.
Yes. Any, any issues coming in, or any projects?
So far, no. Scott Oldbutt says there's a pretty cool project that might be coming in. Just a reminder, we got a week to receive that.
Okay, good. Let's see, before we go to raves, we are going to...
Are you signing the...
Yeah.
We're going to go into executive session at the end of this meeting, after which we will not go, come back to open meeting. The executive session is to comply, to comply with the open meeting and public record law, record laws regarding executive, executive session minutes of the board for August 26th, 2024. Discussion to review, approve, and/or release the minutes will be held. Votes may be taken. So after raves, we will, and we need a vote to do that.
Yeah, you'll need a roll call vote.
So any raves?
My rave is that there are no rants, and my other rave is no England Autumn.
England Autumn. I'm good. So my rave is, I went to a baseball game under the lights this past Wednesday, and it was like, it was like going into Field of Dreams.
It was really great.
So I think we have another one going on. I think we have another ballgame that's going to be under the lights. If you get a chance, it's really worth going down to see it. The kids are having a great time. Okay, I'll make a...
Do you want to do the roll call vote?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we go into executive committee. Do I have to read this again?
Just say executive session purpose seven, because you already read the full purpose.
For executive session purpose seven, to comply with open meeting record, public record laws. So roll call vote, Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Trina?
Aye.